So we'll call the meeting for roll call of members.
Okay.
Good one.
Number two.
Number two, okay, okay. Approval and consent agenda.
Yeah, go back to the.
Oh, okay.
Discussion.
Sorry. Discussion about to reorganize the board.
So with Corey stepping down, obviously that needs to be the first thing that we do tonight. So if it's kind of you guys to make a motion nominate somebody, president, vice president, clerk, discuss that. And that's the first order business that we'll need to do before we're going on tonight. I'd just like to say that I hope you three do great, and I hope I'm not nominated to any. I think anybody would do great at it, and I don't want me.
Shane, are you okay with the role of president?
I am okay with the role.
And I will make an motion to nominate you for president.
I'll second. Are we at that point yet, or are we even second, or do we need to discuss all three at one time? I think we could. That's gonna leave, if that motion carries, then it would leave the vacancy there for VP. So it's probably better just to vote individually, and that way it's itemized out. So we can do it all at the one time.
Okay, then we have to vote for Shane for president, so Parker? Let's vote.
So I'm an assistant.
Okay, good one. Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
So regarding vice president, personally, I don't like to be vice president. Would either one of you like to be vice president?
I know I'm not in a current role, and I would be fine signing into a role if that is what you guys want. If you're not wanting to get a role, that leaves me.
How about you?
Okay.
Do either one of you guys be happy being vice president? So what do you think? You've already, you're already the what?
The clerk.
The clerk. And so it seems to me of a natural fit for you to go from clerk to vice president. But again, you would like to be vice president, you would like to be vice president?
Yeah, it's, so I guess if it's kind of an open discussion, this is, this is clearly where I would be. Can we talk hypothetically?
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss whatever. I mean, we're just talking about reorganizing things right here, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say first and foremost that clerk has a very important job. I obviously didn't want to do it whenever it came around the first time. If, if Desiree was to move up, would you be at all interested in being clerk?
Well, I think Desiree has more experience definitely as clerk. Oh, I can do anything if that's up. Just pretty much. Contracts and contracts. Make sure the president is, so they're definitely. Kind of whatever you guys feel.
As vice president, did you feel like there was anything that was, you know, really challenging, or is it just kind of a, is it a rubber stamp job?
As long as you had a good direction from your president and clerk, vice president was, I never felt as if it was very challenging until you had to do the first meeting for the first time. Obviously, I'm still comfortable with Pat mooning meetings, so anyway, that's what it looks like.
What do you have to say, Ray? Well, I mean, I think, you know, like I said, every position's gonna have its own little areas there. And so as Shane was, VP really is there to step in at the president's side, to be at the meetings and conduct the meeting and run that. Of course, position is a little bit more involved during the meetings. So, you know, but I do think that it's good that, you know, as members, you get to experience a little bit of each of those. And there's nothing to say that we can't revisit this later at some point, too. I mean, I don't know that it has to be stuck this way. If you guys ever felt as a group that maybe it needed to be reorganized again for whatever reason, I think that should be.
Especially once we fill that open seat, too.
Sure. Yeah. So it really is kind of right now. I think whatever you guys are comfortable with, I know that all of you work well together. I don't think that there's any egos or anything like that on this board. And so nobody's chasing after any titles or anything like that. So it really is, I think, up to you, what you're comfortable with doing and handling. And I think all of you obviously would do a good job in whatever role you want. So I don't know that that helped any at all, but that, you asked, I mean, that's kind of how I feel. So I think like, you know, like Curtis said, I mean, it does kind of make sense just to kind of move everybody up. So you're probably, I mean, if you're ready to get rid of so many responsibilities, I mean, I mean, that's kind of how that would, that would work. And it takes some coaching on the clerk stuff to make sure that we're in compliance, you know, and coming out of executive session and all those kinds of things, make sure that it's worked correctly and all that stuff. So like I said, it's really, it's what you're comfortable with. But I think anybody in that role is gonna be, is gonna be fine here. Would you both, either one of you be happy to be the role? I'll nominate Desiree for vice president.
Does that need a second? Second.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll vote. Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
If you're willing, I'll nominate Collins for.
I don't want me to nominate you for the position. That's fine.
I was waiting for you to turn that back on.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
I hope that this isn't a burden for you and all the stuff you're gonna have to do now.
Well, I have a towel, so.
Thank you guys both for being the VIPs. Okay, well Shane, I think that, that kind of does that for number two there. We view as president, Desi as vice president, Evan will take over as clerk, and Curtis as continuing member. I don't want my best.
So we'll move on to number three. Approval of consent for agenda.
Going from A through B, everybody's had a chance for a few minutes if there's anything in there. It was a pretty short meeting last month. So like I said, I looked through there earlier, I didn't see anything in there that we might need to modify everything that's found there. So going on to B with our encumbrances, purchase orders. Things have been very, very busy. However, as far as our operating budget goes, things have been pretty normal, nothing crazy, no ad expenses, knock on wood. The biggest thing we have coming up is going to be when we do the project for the intercom system, and will we use that security funding through the state for that. So that will be coming up in the next couple of months. But hopefully, until then, it's kind of business as usual. So as far as any out of the ordinary monthly expenses, we really don't have any. All of our utilities are running about the same, haven't seen any big swings there. And then our contracted services, kind of those monthly payments out of general fund. Other than that, like I said, we really haven't had to do a lot. Child nutrition, we did get a notice there that we carried over too much, but there's some waivers that we can apply for. But we really, it was kind of one of those things, we've already spent the money. And so there may be some things, though, if we need to spend a little more, they only allow you to, I believe it's, is it three months or three months' worth of the expenses what we're supposed to carry over? But because of the federal funding, we've had more there. Of course, we did the project last summer on the freezer, and so that was about $20,000 that we spent. So there may be some updates and some things in the kitchen and cafeteria areas in those buildings that we look at. We'll get into that a little bit more, but like I said, when we look at our fund balance now, you know, our monthly, three-month operating expense is gonna be roughly around $50,000. So right now, we're still maybe $20,000 over, what the state allows. But we've kind of tried to, have been a little strategic about holding on to that as long as we could. So there's some waivers, we may look at that and see if we can carry over some money. You know, we've still been allowing or providing, I should say, free breakfast, and so we want to continue to do that. So I think what we'll be looking at is just updates and upgrades in the kitchen, see, you know, if there's some expenses there, that some things that may need to be addressed.
When do we have to do that by?
At the end of June, I think, as long as we, they're paid work. We have to, yeah, we kind of have to give them a plan on how we're gonna spend that when we submit it. So Amanda and I will meet and get together and probably visit with Marie and just kind of go over some things that might be needed there and see what exactly that looks like before the end of the fiscal year. So I don't think it's kind of, we're not gonna need to spend a lot. It's kind of silly that we have to, have to do that and we can't hold on to it for a rainy day, but that's just the way it is. And we kind of knew that, we knew it was coming eventually, but we're trying to be wise about spending that money over the last couple of years. So I'll update you more as, as we get closer on that, as far as that goes. Our regional accreditation officer going through, just talking about some of these different funds, the sinking fund. We've had this issue in the past with it showing a negative balance at the end of the year because of uncollected taxes and protest. Usually, we've submitted our paperwork and we haven't had any issues. We got an email here a couple weeks ago notifying us that that was now going to be a deemed on our accreditation report. So again, we have no control over that. We've given everything, we've explained that to them, that it's due to protest and uncollected taxes. So we're jumping through more who's trying to work through that. Like I said, that hasn't been an issue from the State Department before, when we've had that happen. We've written letters, given explanations, and so we did the same thing. But I sent an email over a month ago to the State Department inquiring about as to why we were getting that, and I have yet to get a response, and they won't pick up the phone down there. So I know that's on camera, too, and I really don't care at this point. I'm not the only one that feels that way right now with State Department. So anyway, it's been pretty frustrating, not being able to get answers that we need when we have questions. And so I'll keep you updated on it, but that's kind of where we're at with a couple of those things. Right now, our operating, general fund operating balance is good. I still think it's gonna be fairly healthy at the end of the year. It looks like right now, we're probably gonna have expended a little bit more than we brought in. But I knew that was probably gonna be the case with what gross production was doing at the time, so it's not gonna, we shouldn't have any major surprises, but it will be, you know, continued reason that we gotta be a little more conservative. And building fund is gonna be pretty healthy. I'd like to see it a little bit more, but right now, it's in good shape for what we need. So as far as B goes, with all those things that I've said there, all in all, I still feel like we're in pretty good shape. Just got some challenges and hurdles to work through, and that's what I'll always do. Activity fund report, unless Kendra has something. It's just a crazy, busy time of year with all kinds of activities going on. Now, prom's over, that might slow down a little bit more, going out purchase orders for all those things. But track and baseball, speech, the FCCLA, it's just, we've got a lot of activities going on this spring, and I'm sure we'll have some field trips and other things along those lines, too. I've already kind of touched on some things. As far as the treasurer's report goes, I will say of our interest income again this month was, was much higher than it had been, so getting that, that better interest rate for ACB is supposed to help, help some things out. So that money that we did lose at mid-year from the state, it looks like by the end of June, I think we will have recouped almost all of that loss through this interest income. So kind of washed, washed out there, but that's better than not having it at all. So that was good. On fundraisers, the only request that we've had is FCCLA would like to host a horn pole tournament, and that would be to raise funds, I believe, for National Convention this summer for them to travel to Seattle. Didn't really specify a date on that, but I'm sure that will go over well with the students. So they would like to host that. So unless you have questions, that's kind of all I have to add on those consent agendas.
I do, do they, they don't have an amount to pay?
No, she didn't specify. I just, I don't think that she's sure how it'll go over. They haven't done it before. I don't think that, I mean, I don't know what the cost, I think that they're probably planning on parting the boards and things like that, and just trying to find a time. She did put it in there, but I would say they probably don't raise five hundred bucks or something like that. Probably. I know what we did on Homecoming and Tailgate, I know there was about three or four cents there, so. Yeah, I don't, I think it's one of those experiments that she's just gonna try out, but I think it'll go over well. I'm not even gonna be able to do that.
Shouldn't have said that. Throw children.
Would I put it to a group?
Chris, is that you?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number four, discussion by the board, to determine the process to fill the vacant seat, number four.
So with direction from OSSBA, what, what we really just need to do here is we need to have a discussion and we need to decide the process to deal that number four seat. We really, simply, we have two options. We can appoint, or we could hold a special election. But we have to do one of each of those things within the next 60 days. Of course, last official date was the second, and so that really gives us till the end of May to fill that seat. I know it's, in the past, I know we've appointed one thing that they suggested that we make sure and discuss, it's just the process of that, if that's what we decide to do. I would make a recommendation that we would look to appoint somebody. Special election, that costs a lot of money, and just voter turnout isn't always great. But if we decided to appoint, then basically, my suggestion would be that we have an application process, and so we need to determine if that's what we want to do, through the application for that seat would be turned into, whether that be here at the office to me or to Shane as the new president. And then there, there really needs to be, you know, kind of a deadline put on that. Applications need to be turned in by this date at 3:00 PM to the high school office. Once we receive the applications, then we can call a special meeting, we can bring applicants in and interview them, and get their thoughts, you know, kind of on, you know, why they would want to serve on board. I will tell you, I've had about five people that have reached out, said that they would have an interest, and so I know that there are people out there that are willing to do that. What we need to do tonight is just kind of decide what that's gonna look like for us, and lay that out there, and then, and then go from there. You know, if it was a situation where we took applications and split vote, we just could decide, as long as we still have time within that 60-day, I mean, we could hold special elections still, if I understand me, so. So like I said, I would kind of recommend, you know, today's the eighth. I would think a couple of weeks, which, you know, maybe April 19th, that's a Friday, receiving applications. I know we're not in school that day, but as long as it was postmarked by April 19th, and we could then, we can review those. That gives us a couple of weeks before the May board meeting. So if we wanted to hold a special meeting before that and interview with the idea that at the May meeting, we would go through an appointment process at that point. That's kind of what I think, you know, that process could look like, so what do you guys go on?
If we do, we appoint and do the application, do we have to advertise for anything?
I think that we probably should. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and I'll make sure that we, if it needs to be in the paper, I'll clarify that. I think tonight, if that's what we decide to do, I think we can put, you know, we'd advertise, and however that needs to be, be done, we could do that.
Well, I lean more towards that, towards appointing in the application process myself, because I don't feel like spending money to hold a special election when we have candidates that are already interested, I think.
To that point, if we had a special election, then we wouldn't be deciding, better or worse, the community could decide and we could not have to. And I don't know what it costs, but, you know.
I don't have that in person.
I'm sure all of them would be great, but then we would be telling four or five, four other people no, and if the community chose, then we'd just be along the list, whatever the community said. I don't know what the costs are at all.
Well, also goes back to what you were saying, too, like, how great is the turnout of a special election? Will there be enough people to actually voice? Is there enough awareness of a special election for that community to make their voice versus a general election?
Yeah, I don't know. We'd have to find out as far as, you know, registering, if they're Republican, Democrat, if there was two Republicans in the Democratic, there have to be a, the optics could look bad. So what has happened in the past? Typically, in this situation, there's been an appointment made. When no one, no one's filed or somebody's gotten off before their term ends, I think, and I'm not saying all of them a long time ago, but I would say within the last 10 or 15 years, I think that's kind of how it's, how it's typically been. And I think to that point, I mean, I think that, I mean, there's nothing that says that, you know, the people that might want to put their name in there, it's not gonna be a secret. And so I would imagine that there would be some, you know, some ability there to kind of call and, and find out kind of the pulse, you know, of what maybe other people might think of that, since that we had, if that makes sense. I mean, like I said, the ones that have contacted me so far, I think, I mean, I think it'll be, it would be the tough decision, because I think all of them have some really good qualities. It's very good board. Somebody that's willing to donate the time, energy, you can get eight people to know. Yeah.
I thought you'd been, Shane, you really had to do the appointment, so. That's funny, but, funny.
You have a role. For sure.
So, but I don't think at that time there was five applicants either, so.
Yeah, I don't think anybody, either was right, or I wasn't right, yeah. And some of those that have reached out, like, well, nobody else has, you know, I mean, that's just more of an inquiry, I guess, at this point with a couple of them, but I think there's some that, you know, they really will. And I think some of it was the, the reason they didn't file, either they didn't know about it, or they expected Corey to put in and found out that he hadn't, you know, so. I don't know that there's not interest, I don't know that there's anybody out there right now that's just looking to, you know, get on, start grinding axes or anything like that either, so.
Well, I think having that application process, too, you, you have to want it to apply, and your kind of thing, so that, that's a good thing. It's not just like, well, if nobody else does it.
Sure.
Well, you're expressing interest by actually filling out the application, so that could also. Well, you're expressing interest by actually filling out the application, so that could also, if they don't care enough to fill out the application, then they're probably not going to be.
Step it over a little bit there.
Yeah.
Could I do multiple, multiple applicants? Things, which is, so it's a little bit easier process.
Me, really?
Under the applicants, that we can tell us and talk to us about reviews and points and.
I think so too. I think that of those five, you're probably, I don't think that you're gonna hurt anybody's feelings by doing the application. And I think if we did it again in two years before, the five that didn't get it would probably do it again. That's the way I feel about those people that are running.
So like I said, I just, I mean, that was kind of my thought is, after this, then would be, that they just said, you know, kind of set some deadlines and how that's gonna work, so that it's clear. But then also, we kind of know the timelines of what we're looking at and what we need to do. And I know sometimes, you know, setting those special meetings and getting everybody in and being able to do that is difficult. It gives us a little bit of time there, gives us a couple of weeks before our next regular meeting. But that also gives us time if we didn't want to make that decision that quick. We still have some time to wait a little bit longer.
I would also interject, if that's the way we decide to go, I would just assume you handle it and me come to the school versus, because I'm man out of town, packed line, so it would just be pretty much to me.
Do they have a special application, or are they just gonna be like?
I think that the form, the application form should be pretty simple. I think we just need name, you know, kind of an address, physical address, so we can prove that they're a member of our district, a resident of our district. And then just a short description of, you know, what would you, what would you bring to Cherokee Board of Education? I mean, I don't know that at that point, it really needs to be much more than that. And then we can, like I said, then we can look at those, and we'd be able to bring them in and talk to them and get a little bit more into that.
That's simple, understood, though, that they had a specific one.
No, I don't think so. As long as they're, you know, we can, and they can show that they're a resident of our school district. And like I said, just a short description of why they.
That might be something that we can get some of that information off of the filing, what you have to fill out to file.
Yeah.
And put that on.
Yeah.
But I like the idea that applications submitted by that nineteenth or even the eighteenth, for the last day, that schools open that week, if they're gonna be giving it to you, and then that way it'll give us two weeks, so just ahead of before the May meeting. I do like that at that point.
So we could, we could say that applications for seat number four would be, need to be completed and turned in to the high school office by April nineteenth. To attention to the superintendent. And then we will conduct and hold interviews at a special meeting to be determined later, at a later date. And right now, I think that's all we can do with that. At that special meeting, if we came out of those interviews and special meeting, felt like we were knew what we wanted to do, we can put that on the agenda, give us that opportunity. If we don't want to, we can table it. We're going away. So we just have to have that within sixty days.
Make a motion?
It was just the discussion.
All right, well then, I will make a motion to fill the vacant seat by application process with April.
Each to the nineteenth is fine. Like I said, we don't have school the nineteenth, but it's however.
April nineteenth, eighteen, and interview at a later date.
Do we need to vote on it? Okay, it just says discussion.
Uh, yeah, let's, yeah, we need to, yeah, we can, we can, we got a little disclaimer at the top there that we can vote on it. So I think that we need to vote just to make sure that it's.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin? Gibson?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Number five, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the Title IX policy.
So Title IX, historically, has always dealt with really non-discrimination in boys and girls' sports is what I think most people think of when they hear of Title IX. But that has changed. And so in visiting with our regional accreditation officer, you know, he asked, well, when's the last time a Title IX policy's been updated, and it had been several years. And so we had things in our policy that covered a lot of this. We just need to bring it up to date. It's been, it's been fifteen, twenty years probably since things have been updated. So the policy that is in the packet covers all of the things that Title IX really covers now. And that's non-discrimination with your hiring processes, your employment processes. It has to do with sexual harassment in the workplace. It has to do with sexual harassment of students, either by some other students or by teachers and staff. There's several things in there. These, this policy came from the OSSBA. There's several other schools that I've looked at websites. This is what they have on there. One thing is that it has to note who the Title IX coordinator is, who the investigators are, and then who is the decision maker if there is an investigation. And so, like I said, based off kind of advice and some other superintendents, those roles, the district activity or athletic director would be the coordinator. Investigators would be the appropriate grade level principal, depending on maybe where the complaint came from. And then the decision maker would be the district superintendent. It's, like I said, it's pretty lengthy. There's a lot of detail in here. Most of it has to do with procedures, investigation procedures and process. There has to be a complaint form as part of the policy that has to be filed, and then lots of documentation. And so, like I said, this policy goes into a lot more depth. We used to have and still do a grievance policy that was referred to if there was a Title IX issue. But this, like I said, in the newer way that Title IX is handled, these forms have a lot more to do with the sexual harassment issues under Title IX. Like I said, there's a rate report part of this. Notifications, once the investigation's been conducted and a decision has been made, all of those things are included in this policy. Yeah, there's, there's just, there's a few revisions, like I said. Looking through it, there's not really, I mean, it still covers things that old Title IX used to, but this just has a lot more to do with emails and just different things that were around the last time our policy was, with that updated. Would you go ahead and approve?
Just a second. Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the state required pronoun policy.
So at the beginning of the year, we were told that if we did not have a specific policy that addressed pronouns, that we did not need one, but that's not what we've been told, now we need a policy. So this is what, again, let's get them from the OSSBA and some other schools. I know there's a lot of, lot of talk out there on these issues. What this policy is, basically, is it makes the school district has to disclose to its students, parents, or guardians any information known to the district or its employees regarding material changes reasonably expected to be important to parents regarding their child's health, social, psychological development, including identity information. It states at the beginning that no school district and no employee of the district or its school shall encourage, coerce, or attempt to encourage or coerce a minor child to withhold information from the child's parents or guardians. And identity information is to find any names or pronouns used by a student at school in the social transition or other transition to a gender, the difference from the student's sex. So basically, this policy is for our school staff that if a student informs them that they would like to be referred to by a different pronoun that's typically used with their sex on their birth certificate, that we're required to notify the parents about that. That's what the state's looking for. This isn't saying that we have to do that, or that we're legally required to do those things. It's saying that we have to notify the parents if a student disclosed that information to us. So, like I said, at the beginning of the year, we were asked if we had any policies like this. I think most schools said no, but now they want to see this.
Who said we have to have the policy?
The state firm. There's a Oklahoma accreditation standard two-ten, ten dash two dash three.
What?
So, I mean, I will tell you this, you know, we, we are very strict about when students enroll, whatever names are on the birth certificates, there's, you know, there's Oklahoma laws that prevent males from participating in female sports. There's really, there's nothing here, I don't feel like, that goes against, you know, any values that I feel like are, you know, held pretty strongly here at Cherokee. This is just saying that, you know, a teacher or even a staff member hears a student or, you know, finds out that a student wishes to be called by a different pronoun, that you're required to tell the parent about that. But I don't think it's about that.
Wouldn't it all be covered, catched with Title IX already?
I guess not specifically enough, would be my answer, but, so, yeah.
What if it was in our society?
I make a motion to approve the state required pronoun policy.
Just a second. Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Oh, steady.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Uh, number seven. Do we need to go through number seven? We covered that, didn't we?
Yeah, since we, since we've reorganized, we can skip over number seven and go to number eight.
Okay, number eight. Board to consider and take action on the resolution determining the maturities and setting a date, time, place for the sale of the $750,000 building bonds of this school district and designating bond council for the issuance of bonds. The date of preferance is May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, that's the date that Stephen L. Smith kind of drew out there. I didn't put a time on there because that's, it will have to be a special meeting. We can have that special meeting at whatever time. Typically, we've done this each year at noon. We can do it at eight in the morning if we want to. They just kind of need to know, it's just one that we have to, we've got to have it. So if there's an earlier time in the day that works better for schedules, we can do that. Twenty-eighth is a Tuesday. So is that, I mean, like I said, it doesn't have to be at noon. We typically down those at noon, I guess, just because it's probably a easier time to remember for everybody. But we just need to make sure that we've got three people here, so that we can get that business done that day.
That was the day that you mentioned before, right? So I knew it earlier, if we were gonna do it, right?
So that's why I didn't, I didn't put a time on there, because I thought, well.
But you were able to be here and you knew it at the time. I just, if I'm gonna need to be here to do it, I have to do it earlier in the morning, because I'm out of town.
That's gonna be a real tough time for me to be here too, but I might be down here, I just can't say for sure.
Well, would be better.
Totally.
Eight, seven forty-five, something like that. I can, I can do the seven forty-five right. Did it, right?
Yeah.
I'll be there.
So we just gotta make sure that we get it in, and I give those dates to Andy and, and then we'll work it. So third problem with that, and we'll fix it up then. Okay, so, seven forty-five AM, that's, okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a second.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Okay, number nine, principals and superintendents report principals first.
On March seventh, the elementary hosted our Nacho Average Artist Night, and we had about fifty families come and have nachos, and we had the gym set up like an art gallery, and it was so cool to see all of their art displayed. That's something we don't typically have time to do on the day, since we have an art program, but we have a lot of little artists, and they did a really good job, so. We had a great turnout for our spring conferences. We appreciate all the parents that made time to come to spring conferences. After spring break, Mrs. Kedmore hosted her sequoia party for the third through fifth graders who took time to read three sequoia books, and they got to vote on their favorites, so they'll be excited to see which ones are the winners. We're kind of in field trip season. Our pre-k kindergarten students took a field trip to Rialto last week, and they had a great time. And they were very impressed with how long those little ones made it through the movies, not that many restroom breaks, so that's exciting for the teachers. Our fifth and sixth grade got to kick off track season last Wednesday with a windy meet at Ringwood. I think Ringwood always is a windy meet, but that's where we started last week. And I just want to wish all of our third through fifth graders good luck next week as we start third grade state testing. They've been working very hard, teachers and students, and I know they're gonna do a great job, but that's what we're getting ready for, so. That's all I thought.
That Mr. Probst's report, he's at a baseball game right now. So the Lady Chiefs basketball team received the distinguished academic plaque by having a minimum cumulative GPA of three point five and ranked in the upper ten percent of their respective class. The Chiefs basketball team was awarded the OSS's. The Chiefs basketball team was awarded the OSSAA Academic Achievement Award. That award goes to teams that have a cumulative GPA of three point two five or above. Carson Schombacher was selected to the CTV Sports Basketball All-Star Team. She was also named a Small West All-Region Player by the Oklahoma Girls Basketball Coaches' Association. And I'm going to throw in there that she is signed to play with North Western, so that was exciting last week. We had several FCCLA students compete at State Store, and they will be attending the FCCLA State Convention in Tulsa this week. The speech and debate team was regional runner-up, and they leave Thursday for their state speech and debate contest. We will once again be hosting the Regional Tragney to be held April twenty-seventh, and we'll have Class A and Two A schools here again. Maggie Johnson qualified for the state spelling B. Only twenty-five students statewide qualified for that. Prom was last weekend. I said, Mrs. Snyder and Mrs. Van Meter, two class sponsors, and the entire junior class and the parents did an amazing job, and everybody that helped out and made it through the wind. If you were there for that, that was, they did a really good job getting through it. Mr. Pror stood a great job there. Decorated very nicely. Meal was great, and I think the kids had a great time at the after prom as well. So, you know, prom, all of those things went really well. That's all he has on his report. I really don't have anything for this month. It's just, it's getting busy. I will give you a few days ahead of time because it's going to be here before we know it. Graduations, May sixteenth is eighth grade graduation. That will be at seven PM. High school graduation will be on the seventeenth at seven PM. Baccalaureate this year will be on May fifteenth at seven PM, and they're going to have that at the Baptist Church. Minister Alliance has decided to have that there. Sometimes it's at the auditorium, but they've decided to do that at the Baptist Church this year. So those dates will be coming up pretty soon. Like I said, it's just a, it's a really, really busy time of year, and people are going in a lot of different directions, so trying to keep buses and people peeled up.
Do you want me to read on number ten or just go into, make a motion to go into executive session? Would you like me to read it?
Oh, well, I think we typically do.
Okay. All right. Take a big breath. Number ten, proposed executive session to discuss the employment status of certified and or support personnel as listed on attachment A for the school year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, so that the board can return to the open session and vote to employ or not employ certified and or support personnel as listed on the attachment as for the school year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, person two twenty-five, O dot S dot real seven, B one, in A, discussion and vote to convene an executive session, in B, executive session, in C, discussion and vote to acknowledge return to open session, in D, open session, in E, statement of minutes and executive session. Any questions?
Yes. Make a motion or not? I can say.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one? Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Number ten, C, discussion and vote to acknowledge return to open session.
But not?
Make a motion?
To acknowledge to return to open session.
Yes. I'll second.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
In the open session.
Go to E.
Go to E. Statement of minutes and of the executive session. Session.
During executive session, we discussed the employment status of certified and support personnel listed on attachment A for the school year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, so that the board can return to open session and vote to employ or not employ certified and or support personnel listed on attachment A for school year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, person listed on O S three seven B one.
Superintendent's recommendation.
My recommendation is that all certified and support staff listed on attachment A be rehired for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Did you make a motion? Carter? And then you?
Yeah.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number twelve, right? Discussion and vote to employ, unemployed, the employees listed on attachment A. So thirteen, discussion vote to approve, to approve or not approve the district class size capacity number.
That didn't change from the last time we did, so I just wanted to give kind of an update as to where the class sizes are right now and the number that we have. And then we may, we will probably discuss if we need to adjust these. But right now, in pre-K, capacity size is twenty. Kindergarten is twenty-five, and we're full there. First grade, twenty-seven. On my last count, we had one spot, and currently have filled any of these. Second grade, we have a capacity of thirty, we have zero spots available. Third grade, third grade, capacity of twenty-seven, so zero spots available. Fourth grade, capacity of thirty, two spots available. Fifth grade, capacity of thirty-five, with one spot available. Sixth grade, capacity of twenty-eight, no spots available. Seventh grade, capacity of twenty-eight, with one spot. Eighth grade, capacity of thirty-three, with one spot. Ninth grade, capacity of twenty-eight, with one spot. Tenth grade, twenty-three, with one spot. Eleventh grade, capacity of twenty-two, no spots available. And twelfth grade, capacity of twenty, with no spots available. So we could be over, if this says that we don't have any spots available, we could be over that capacity size because we have kids in districts. But right now, that's kind of where we're at, and really the reason for the differences in those class sizes has to do with our schedule and how many kids we can fit maybe in one class, if it's just an English class, science class, math class, especially at high school. That's kind of what we're looking at there. But like I said, next month, we may revisit this, look at it, and see what our class schedule could look like after we do pre-enrolling, and if we feel like we can increase some of those, if we got any transfer students or anything like that, maybe over the summer that want to come, that might be a possibility then. So, but right now, these are the capacity numbers that I think we need to stick with.
Number fourteen.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we'll need to vote to approve, to keep votes or not.
So I'll make a motion to approve the district class size capacity first as stated.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Now, number fourteen, any new business?
There's none of business.
None of business. Number fifteen, ask for the returnment.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.